Good evening, everyone. One second here. Okay, let's try that again. Good evening, everyone. This is the time and place set for the master plan work session for the city of Royal Oak. And I'm going to call the meeting to order and have the commissioners introduce some stuffs starting down there, and then we're going to have our consultants also introduce themselves.
Good evening, Anne Beeky.
Charlotte Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Nicholas Karchowski, Assistant City Attorney.
Woody Gantina.
Joseph Murphy, Director of Planning.
And I'm Gary Casado, the chairperson. And then we have live over here, one of our consultants.
This is Paul Arbeal from McKenna.
And we also have another consultant zooming in. Can you introduce yourself?
Matt Lambert from DPZ.
Oh, you're muted.
Oh, I'm not.
Oh, well, you're kind of soft.
Maybe WR can get that.
That's good.
Good. Matt Lambert, DPZ.
Try that again.
Matt Lambert, DPZ.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready to go. Okay, so on the agenda here, we have the results of the neighborhood meeting and roundtable discussions with what took place on the 25th and other dates as well. And I believe our master plan consultants are going to give us a give us a report, yes?
Yes.
Okay, well, I don't know what's happening with this. I'm going to turn this off. Proceed.
All right, technology day, right? All right, I'll we'll give a brief, a brief run through. This is all information that's related to what's in your packet. All 50 pages there, which is, which is really just a summary of quite a bit more information. And what we've, what we really, there's a few things that we certainly need to get to today. A good amount is discussing that input. But it's also really focused on what areas of focus can we agree are important going forward? And that'll allow us to take much more of that detailed input, bucket that into areas of focus and orient ourselves towards the upcoming work. And there's some other things that we need to connect on. Up there at the top is selecting dates for Shret in May. And then a couple of details about information being on the website, input engagement methods, how we are going to put the Shret together and how you'd like to be involved in that process, and then other topics that you might have. I did want to remind people in terms of the overall timeline for the process. We're just here in the background analysis, initial public input side of things. Here we're talking about what we've heard to date. And then we'll move into preparations to actually start putting together proposals and ideas in person and get feedback on those. So again, we're still within this first phase. We collected input through a number of channels and continue to analyze the condition of the city. We intend for this to help further direct our analysis and our focus for the Phase Two, which is a Shret. And that too will be input gathering, but it'll be much more focused in terms of the input gathering as opposed to this first phase where we just begin with the broad questions and see where that leads us. So what you have in your packet has quite a bit of info. Again, it's a summary, summary info to date, and we'll briefly review these. It's really intended to be a snapshot of where we are at the moment. The beginning of that is a summary of what we've heard so far, including what we would like to discuss, our focus being going forward, following. There's some information relative to demographics analysis and mapping. Those are, those are in process, some of them. The demographics have been on the website. And then the bulk of the document summarizes the input that we've received to date through interviews, meetings, exercises, and the survey. Now, we continue to receive additional information through those, through other channels. The survey's still open. There's the website comment form. And those have been reviewed briefly, but they're not compiled in full detail here as we have for the sort of in-person and the summary of the survey results. So, and we can go back to all this as we need when we're in discussion. This is the list of areas of broad focus that we've collected between all the different means of input. These can certainly change as we go, but we certainly want to discuss with you what those, what the focus will be as we do further analysis and get into the Shret, which also influences the way that we design the Shret conversations and activities. So we'll come back to this later. We've included a bit of demographic information. There's a more complete set, as I said, on the project website. The demographics show what we might expect, that the city is young and relatively affluent. Population growth is projected to be relatively low, however, household size is shrinking, which then drives the demand for more housing than it would have in the past. You know, just number, number of new households versus number of residents. And while most households are currently homeowners, that demographic is shrinking and the percentage of renters is growing, though it's not heavily concentrated in any one area of the town, you know, of the city over another area of the city. And so we've seen that through, through mapping those details. Other information, like commuting patterns, will help frame some of the future sustainability discussions as we look at destinations and mode share, these sorts of things that affect the amount of greenhouse gases being produced, for instance. Between now and then, Land Use USA will continue on this economic analysis, well, an economic analysis, which is separate, and a real estate analysis as well. And that'll round out the look at the current conditions in Royal Oak, what is available housing-wise, business-wise, and what opportunities there may be. So we intend to continue that up to the Shret and share, share those outcomes at that point. In terms of mapping, we're in the process of analyzing the city through maps. Some of this is demographic, some of it's physical. This map, for instance, is a first draft, probably has some things incorrect in here. We're looking at how far destinations throughout the city for recreation, shopping, and services, and institutions are from where people live, which is helpful in analyzing barriers and opportunities for different modes of traffic, for instance. Streets, of course, are a critical analysis from a physical mapping standpoint. For instance, comparing here bike facilities and traffic volume, we can help more easily identify issues like, for instance, shared lanes on curbs, probably not a good idea. You know, it's the wrong type of bikeway for that volume and speed of traffic. We also see that the bike network isn't all that clear. And then on the other side, with the vehicles, we can compare traffic volume to the designs of roadways. And we're also finding, you know, some questions here, like in some COGS data, why does Catalpa show such a high number? So we're looking into that as we continue to work on the maps. For, for public opinion, we've pursued a few avenues in parallel. With these, we intended to begin really broadly to see what sorts of themes came up regularly in conversation to test some initial sentiment around the city, neighborhoods, growth, transportation, and to be open to specific issues that we might need to address in the master plan, even though other things come up that may not be the purview of master plan. And so that shapes the beginning of the work. Each, each means of information gathering has had different audiences and purposes, yet the themes are pretty common once you analyze all the data together. We began with one-on-one stakeholder interviews, then opened the online survey and web comments, followed by roundtables and neighborhood meetings. And out of all this, we were not really surprised by any of the input gathered, nor of issues that some people are very vocally concerned about. That's, that's to be expected. Residents here are certainly a little more interested in sustainability and walkability than, than other places that we, that we work in. So that is a difference. A lot of the decor issues that people are concerned about are pretty common in other places. And that's the, you know, and that is the context for concern of preserving neighborhood character, concerns about housing costs, and, you know, other issues that we're seeing at a national scale. Paul, I'll let Paul run through the, just the next two, which is a summation of the interviews and the business roundtables, institutional roundtables, and neighborhood meetings, and I'll come back and wrap up the rest of the information. Paul?
Thanks. So as Matt said, the first thing we did as part of this input process was to conduct one-on-one interviews with all of you, the planning commission, as the body that's going to be doing the bulk of the work from the city side on this. And then with the, with the city commission, with city staff, department heads, to sort of get a lay of the land as far as how things are currently operating in the city, and a few institutional representatives, people like the Chamber of Commerce and the DDA. We summarized the sort of key themes and takeaways. If you're, you know, reading the document in your packet from front to back, it's sort of getting more and more detailed, but as Matt's already sort of summarized the, what we think are the key areas of focus in, I think the one-on-one interviews did a good job of sort of setting up the charge and helped us develop the prompts for conversations for the, for the roundtables and larger conversations. Just for anyone who's in the audience, this document, I understand you cannot read it, but it's available at the Agenda Center on the city's website. I think some of you already have it. And will be on the project website at some point after we discuss it in this meeting. But the, the key stakeholder interviews, we organized into feedback about downtown and then just identified a few key takeaways, Woodward and the challenges of redevelopment there, a general desire to green and beautify it. Sustainability, as we've heard since the beginning of the interview process, is a, is a strong mandate in this plan. Neighborhoods and housing, we, a continuing theme is the preservation of the character of existing neighborhoods and appreciation for that. Through all sorts, through all of the conversations we've had, we've heard some sort of appreciation for the character, some concern about preservation, some mention of design standards would be desirable to sort of make sure that, that development going forward is, is of an appropriate quality. We had conversations about transportation and about walkability. And I think what is just a couple of key things that were miscellaneous, but some, some key takeaways, we heard about the charge for this plan, some extra sort of mandates or that, a desire for the master plan to provide a stronger point of view regarding what the city expects from development, and a stance regarding good urbanism and good design, providing guidance for the modernization of ordinances, which is one of the reasons that, that we're doing this process. And then the charge that the engagement process should be reflective of all citizens, including the traditionally underrepresented. So as we'll discuss and as we mentioned, we, we have a sense of where, of the underrepresented populations and what we've done so far, and we are working to make sure that the further engagement covers those people. On February 24th and 25th, we held roundtables. The Friday, the 24th, we had a invited, the planning division invited several hundred businesses to a roundtable session. We had a good group of mostly downtown-centric businesses, the conversation focused around downtown. Just some key takeaways related to business in that, in that discussion was a desire to preserve the character of downtown, to activate vacant and commercial space, to beautify Woodward. Again, it wasn't, we didn't limit the conversation to downtown, and we actually sort of steered it towards other corridors as well, but given, given who attended, it was downtown-focused. We had a good conversation about public art and sort of an appreciation for Royal Oak embracing art and, and the sense of place that it affords. A desire to strive for balance between the types of uses and businesses downtown, and some mention of design standards in that session as well. We had a, we had a couple of institutional sessions, one of which was an open invitation where we, which was not incredibly well-attended. But we did get good input from the animal shelter specifically and talking about their future plans and what that might mean for that part of town near the Kroger, near the existing animal shelter. And then we had a session with a focus group with Beaumont Corwell employees who had expressed some interest in participating and offered to sort of provide some insight. And we got some good feedback from that, just both organizationally. Beaumont is interested in employee attraction and retention. They expressed, they expressed that they have great partnership with the city, that the employees that work there like being in Royal Oak because of its location and their ability to sort of be in the city. And then corporately, they, they're interested in opportunities for transit as they have many transit-dependent employees, and, and housing for them is an issue as far as being able to attract and retain their workforce. And then on Saturday, we had a series of four neighborhood meetings that more than 300 people attended, acknowledging the logistical issues. We did get off to a rough start, but I think despite those, we, we had some robust conversations, got a lot of good feedback. The, in your packet is, is a summary specific to each meeting, sort of key themes and takeaways that have some variation on each of these things, but I think the, the overall key themes that we synthesized from, from every conversation, there was a lot of commonality in the, in the topic areas, and then a little bit of variation depending on where people were coming from. But those key takeaways are that the clearest message we heard is that people value Royal Oak and living here because of the sense of community, because of their affection for their particular neighborhood, because of the existing character of, of neighborhoods, because of their access to parks, because of the downtown as it exists and what it affords as far as a sense of place and entertainment and amenity options, and also because the city's in a good place regionally, and we heard several times, you can get anywhere from here in a short amount of time. So as I said, the stakeholders that we talked to during those sessions frequently expressed a desire to preserve the residential character of their own neighborhoods. Many stakeholders do have nearby walkable amenities, but that's one thing where there was some variation across the city, just very generally. The Southern meeting had more people that sort of felt satisfied, or especially if they could walk to downtown, felt like there is walkable amenity. But we had many other conversations where people expressed a desire to be able to have proximate neighborhood-scale amenities. And that, that also, that conversation also included talk about other ways that people access commercial areas, other ways that people move around and bike infrastructure. And the general consensus is that by and large, people feel like their, their own neighborhoods are fairly walkable, but if it involves crossing a major street, then those major streets are barriers. There were, there was a lot of concern expressed about recently completed and anticipated development and sort of the pace of change in these conversations that we had. And, and that took the form of several things. One was the, the relationship of multifamily housing and its potential to encroach into single-family neighborhoods. There's, we had a lot of conversation about the size and the character of recent single-family home construction, and then a discussion about price and affordability and sort of the general acknowledgement that, that there's rising values, and the cost of housing in Royal Oak is, is getting more expensive, but much disagreement about the extent to which that's a problem. There was a lot of support, which is, I'm sure not surprising to any of you, for the efforts to allow residents to age in place. And there was, I think, a diversity of thought about the sentiment about what that means and, and some of the desires we heard was for more diverse housing products, which include single-stores, senior-accessible, single-family homes. And then that also led into some conversation about the availability of accessible parking. The downtown-specific feedback we heard in the neighborhood meetings talked about, aside from generally valuing downtown as a, as a place to go and as a, providing the cherished gathering places like the farmers' markets and the new park. There was concern expressed about the amount of vacancy in downtown commercial space and the balance, which we heard in the business session too, sort of the balance of offerings with a frequent desire for more retail, but also with an acknowledgement that the, the, what has happened to retail in Royal Oak is part of a national and global trend that is challenging brick-and-mortar retail all over the place. We did hear about the parking a lot, just because it's a, you know, it's a topic of frequent conversation. But I think the, when the conversation went to whether or not there was enough parking, there is concerns about the, there's a perception about the safety and accessibility of parking garages as an alternative to street parking. And then there was a lot of conversation in these meetings about Woodward Avenue, concern about redevelopment encroaching into, into neighborhoods, a general desire for increased green space and for redevelopment and attracting new businesses and addressing the vacancy. So those are, those are the high-level themes, as I said, in your packets. There was sort of the finer-grain details, and we're happy to discuss any, anything further, but in summary, that's, that's our synthesis of what we heard.
And then there is some, some exercises so far. The first one on the left, we know, we're asking people to sort of map neighborhood boundaries and names, just to start to get, get some thought around, around that, how people are identifying with neighborhoods. I know there's also some, some actual solid association boundaries, you know, take those into consideration, but a lot of, you know, a lot of this identification and mapping is really important for considering, you know, what is accessible to a neighborhood in terms of park space, in terms of neighborhood services, in terms of transportation alternatives, walking, biking, how close are you to any bus service? And, you know, are there places where cut-through traffic is more significant? So we, you know, we kind of want to continue that conversation getting into the Shret. This was sort of just a first, a first go. And then on the website, we asked visitors to map Ideas for Change and what they loved in Royal Oak in terms of ideas. There's about 153 that were submitted, mostly concentrated near downtown, Delamere, the high school, and over to Rochester, and, and then the What I Love. There are about 115 comments tagged there, mostly in the vicinity of downtown. There was an issue with social pinpoint in the backend we recognized with like, dislike. So we've disabled that for the moment, and we're working with them to, to fix their backend. That happens to be the same system used in the Parks Plan. So I think Paul was just as confused about that as I was. So we're working on the software issue there. In the survey so far, we've had 100, or sorry, 1,364 responses, 54 more since we created these graphics, the ones you have. The survey is still open, and we intend at the moment to leave it open to the Shret, but because it's still open, we haven't fully analyzed the results. We were taking a look at some responses related to other public input and patterns and found some things to be, to be fairly insightful. Some of these are in the packet. Overall, while the majority of respondents have lived in Royal Oak well over 10 years, we did find it interesting here that the distribution of ages is pretty even, the distribution of location around the city is pretty even, and that's roughly the same depending upon which area of the city we're looking at. So, you know, in terms of that degree of representation, it's fairly well-distributed and broad, just as you would typically expect. People under, under 25, it's hard to get them to participate, and sometimes the, the online method can be more difficult for older residents, but essentially between 25 and 74, we've got a pretty good, broad range of respondents. Overall, people think that it's a great place to live in Royal Oak. But as for how the city is changing, you know, more, more people feel that it's changing for the better, but there's a good amount who, who don't agree. Generally, those who think the trajectory is not good are more frequently longer-term residents. However, you know, even in that group, there's a pretty equal number of long-term residents who feel it's getting better as those who feel the opposite. So we haven't yet isolated the negative sentiments or the positive sentiments to see what the differences are. That's the sort of analysis we want to continue to do with this as we get closer to the Shret. We've asked similar questions about neighborhoods, how neighborhoods are changing. The most frequent answer is that neighborhoods aren't changing all that much, which is only getting a little bit less optimistic for longer-term residents, but barely. But even more are, are positive or neutral than negative. Neighborhood identity, unsurprisingly, that's stronger for longer-term residents. And as for what should change in neighborhoods, a few items bubble up, for the most part, not a, not a great push for, for significant change. But once we split this data into more, more detail, we might be able to find some more important trends there upon what people are sort of concerned with change and, or would like to see for change in the neighborhood. On transportation, you've got quite a lot of walkers in Royal Oak, which is great, atypical for other places. Of course, nearly everybody drives, but that's really a kind of a regional necessity at the moment. We also found, you know, 45% of people so far responding, report that they cycle, which is also pretty high. And as for, for traffic, there aren't that many people that feel congestion's a major issue, but it is recognized as an occasional problem. And housing, there is concern for housing cost, which, which is pretty strong here. Well, not a direct issue for most of the respondents, there's a general concern for the cost of housing and a strong sentiment that there should be housing that is affordable for people who are employed locally. Concerning where and how additional housing should be accommodated, there's less clear sentiment, which is to be expected. We did find that a slightly negative sentiment, sentiment towards more housing downtown that could correlate with opinions that we've heard through interviews and other comments about the sort of changing downtown character and, and sort of hope for preservation of historic buildings and so forth. There's no surprise that a lot of people don't want to see a ton more housing in the neighborhoods, though some do, and both are difficult issues to address, but, you know, we feel it's worth the effort to really dive into that detail. It'll also be helpful to frame the whole scale of growth question. You know, demographic projections suggest not too much growth is needed, so by no means does every place need to absorb a lot of housing. And at that, places that do, not that much more. So, you know, I think there's working through these, these demographic trends and opinions can help us with that what, where, to what extent question. But, you know, it certainly deserves more detailed attention as we go forward through, through the process. And then, you know, lastly, we also wanted to point out questions like where people shop and the competition, which can be helpful, especially as we hear a desire for more resident-serving businesses downtown, support for services near neighborhoods, and the contribution that those things can make towards sustainability and quality of life. There's more to analyze here, of course, and we have a lot of open-ended comments to work through, where we would just ask people, you know, what else should we be doing? And there's quite a few of those. And we have a consideration to, to, to address, you know, how, how do we want to use surveys through the process going forward? You know, these are broad questions. As we go forward, we can get more targeted. In terms of questions, but we have to avoid survey fatigue, of course. So this is open, responses are still coming in, trailing off a bit, but we're still getting, you know, say, six, six to 10 a day. And, you know, we also, later after the Shret, plan another survey there. So, you know, it's something, something worth considering. So all that brings us to the common areas of focus that we found amongst all these means of input. As noted in the packet, these all mostly align with the subject matter of the existing master plan, with, with the main exception that housing cost wasn't really addressed in the previous master plan. You know, we want to discuss these with you. The question is, are these the right areas to focus on at this point? What really should be prioritized in your mind? If, if these have been a focus for so long, what could we do differently going forward? I think that's going to be a really important thing that we work through throughout the process, so we don't have to answer that today. And then there's some issues that may be, you know, somewhat less important. And, you know, we also have opinions on these, and they'll be addressed through further focus. And I think the lens of sustainability and neighborhood and city structure are going to be important with that. So that's a quick run-through of what's in the packet, and we have a list of things that we certainly want to talk about. We don't have We don't have to go in this, in this order, but we may suggest that the easiest thing to get out of the way is to discuss a week in May for, for the charrette, just because that's an easy checkbox. We want to get that done so that we can be sure to have plenty of time to notify people, to plan meetings, to plan venue organization and so forth. And looking at that, we suggest the week of, of May 15th, that would allow us to hold some weekend activities on the 20th and avoids Mother's Day and Memorial Day weekends. So there's, there's a lot of things that kind of shoehorn you into one time in May. So that'd be a great thing to, to check off and, and we really want to return to the areas of focus, to the engagement methods, input, and how we continue to engage going forward. So that's, that's all I have for now.
Anything? Oops. Anything?
No, I'm good. Let's see if there's questions for me.
Well, I apologize. I'm still feedbacking here, even though I'm trying to push it away.
I think the, the problem is to hear Matt, they have to jack the sound up so much that you get feedback on individual mics.
Okay. Well, the agenda talks about the, hopefully you can hear me. Is my light on or not?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, this went off. Am I being, okay. Anyways, Matt and Paul, on the agenda here is a review of the upcoming charrette. I hope I'm not going on a turn here, but I think it would be, I think it would behoove us for you to explain, what is a charrette? What are you going to do at the charrette? What are you trying to accomplish? How will we know if it's a success? So we, before we get into that, I think I'd like to hear you explain that.
Certainly. So, so the charrette is, is an opportunity for, for us to bring our whole team together to look at physical aspects of the city, to meet with residents, business owners, institutions, officials, to, to basically do the, the work of ideation. We're, we're going to be creating the proposals for what the master plan should include. So here where we, where we say, well, here's, here's what we heard from people in terms of areas of focus, you know, let's take housing, for example. For, for housing, and we'll do this for transportation, for, for other topics that are, that are a clear area of focus, we will address what, what types of, of housing do we have in the city today? What types might there be in the future? Where, where and to what extent might growth occur? But, you know, as opposed to just talking about it, we'll, we'll draw some of these things on, on maps and say, in this location, in this format, so that we can focus on, on getting feedback and build towards, towards an understanding of what may be acceptable, what might be the, the vision of people in terms of how do we sort of go beyond just, say, that topic and, and build towards a vision. So one of the first things that we, we do have on the list is, is sort of a vision for the future. And the goal there is, is to collect all these disparate issues and say, here's what we want to become. So, so we have, we'll have a series of, of, of meetings in person throughout the week and we'll have a whole team that will be doing analysis and making proposals. And we want to make those proposals and get feedback as much as we can at that time to help change and modify those proposals through the week towards, towards the end. And what, what our goal is there is to know, you know, generally, these are the things that we think that the master plan should include. That way we can, we can, following up from that, have a broader input survey with, with the broader public in, in terms of their sentiment regarding the direction that we have for, for each of those. So for, for example, another example is, is the bike, the bike infrastructure, right? You know, we, we noticed that it's not particularly well organized. So we'll draw a plan to organize the bike, the bike infrastructure and then propose that and share that and, and get feedback from there. And the same thing with, with really any other of the subject areas that we're looking to focus on.
All right. Appreciate that. Do any other commissioners have questions for these kids?
Oh, yeah.
Well, they're, they're-
Mr. Gantina had his hand up first.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
So it's good timing in that it's somewhat charrette-related. Can you talk to me about any changes that you're going to implement to the, the process when, when you do the charrette as compared to the resident listening sessions in terms of preparedness? I was a little disappointed with, I was able to attend one of the resident sessions and we got off to a little bit of a shaky start and it looked like there was a little bit of a preparation gap in terms of the group that was there to help facilitate the conversation. I know there was some weather issues and some other things, but it, it seemed like it was a little bit too loose in terms of how the conversation was being stewarded. Is there any, based on, on those meetings, are you going to change your approach to the charrette in any way to help make sure that we're getting more focused conversation?
Yes, and, yes, it got off to a shaky start. It was, the intention of those conversations was to be open-ended since we are trying to, as we said, sort of identify what the problems that we're trying to solve. The, the, the charrette is a much more topic-oriented and focused set of meetings. So at that point, when the team is a lot more educated and we're past sort of the initial analysis phase, all of those, all of those conversations are, are sort of much more focused and not strictly listening, but sort of presenting, presenting thought and, and workshopping.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Chair. I have a bunch of questions. First of all, I, I hope that in the time between now and May, you'll maybe find a way to further explore what people would mean when they say, preserve my neighborhood, because you've spoken of it in your areas of focus as an issue of character, scale, and adjacencies. And yet I, I'm not necessarily convinced that that's the common definition of neighborhood. People may think of their neighborhood in terms of, you know, family size and ages or demographics, or, or they may think of it in terms of, of, you know, traffic or their neighbors. So I, I just want to make sure that, I mean, that, that we're not talking about the, don't build high-rise apartments on Vivreta meme and actually delve into what people mean when they talk about preserving their neighborhood. So, and I do hope that, and you spoke of this in, in passing in your document, that, that, you know, people talk about a townhouse or a ranch or different elements of physical condition, height setbacks, et cetera. So I do hope that in your preparatory materials, you'll establish a common vocabulary so that as people design, they're thinking about the same physical things. Your report also talks, mentions parks several times as a priority. And I'm just, I'm, I'm asking, do we need to spend much time on parks, given that we just got done doing a five-year master plan for our parks with extensive community input? And it does seem like the, I mean, the Proximret Plan tells us what people want, and then it's just a, a matter of competing financial resources within the city, how much money we can, you know, put into park improvements. So I think we should take that into consideration. So you've got your list of, of your areas of focus, and I wonder if you have a tool that you use to prioritize those? And I think about it as the, I call it the optometrist test. I mean, which do you like better, you know, which is more important, housing growth or housing cost? Which is more important, housing cost or neighborhood preservation? So you, I mean, do you have any tools, and maybe this is a question for Matt, do you have any tools to establish those priorities? So I'll throw that question out there and see what you have to say.
Well, you know, one of the things we were, we were wondering about with, with that, you know, you get into the whole survey fatigue, but it would be really helpful to, to, to address that with people. But really, the main, the main way to get to that is, is to try to focus on, on the, on the core, you know, what are the core issues? Because they're all interrelated. I mean, all of it's interrelated. So we could say the core issue is sustainability and frame everything from, from there. We could say the core issue is, is affordability and, and frame everything from there. So it, so it really comes to, to prioritization, like, like you said, and establishing that. Now, that is normally something that we do by continuing more focused conversations on those topics and also proposing that prioritization as part of the proposals for, for the plan. You know, what are the, what are the, what's the vision and the top priorities for this plan? And under, under each one of these, really honing in, I think what I've listed, as, as you point out, are a limited number of items related to each of those areas, but we would look to, to flesh out more specifically what the actual sentiment and what the goals are under each of those areas.
Okay, thanks. So I've got three questions that will come out of, I think, the, the work that Land Use USA will do. And one of them is the question of rental housing. We see that demand for rental housing will increase. And we look around the country and we see large corporate landlords buying up properties in desirable communities like Royal Oak. And then A, taking for sale properties off the market, and B, by their, you know, mass their quantity, driving up rent prices. And I would just, I will just say that I hope that our study looks, examines that in Royal Oak and proposes solutions to that. I did, so your, your report says rents downtown have outpaced local and small businesses' ability to pay, and you see people wanting to activate vacant retail. And I, how do we, if, if, if the rents are that high, then why are rents that high if we have so much vacancy? And I, and I would look to Land Use USA to answer that question as well. So I, I do chuckle for a minute at, at Corwell's assertions that they, they would like to provide, they wish there were housing for some of their lower income workers when they built a shopping center at the corner of Woodward and 13 Mile Road. And despite the encouragement of members of the planning commission, chose instead of to build it multi-story, building it up to the corner, making it an urban space with potentially housing above, chose to build a suburban strip mall. Similarly, they chose not to establish a, a robust transit center there when they're telling us that so many of their workers rely on transit to get to work. So I hope that perhaps they will have an epiphany under their new ownership and perhaps address some of those questions. Surely, DPZ, surely, I know, don't call you surely, surely other cities of America have found ways to make parking structures, parking decks desirable and, and erase the, the fears or the negativity that people have. Right? You have, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Usually, I mean, it becomes expensive, of course, but usually it's, it's height, it's, it's height, lighting, access, you know, visibility in and out, but yes.
So perhaps it's somewhere along the line, you can share with us some of those solutions to, to help us address those concerns here in our city. And then my last question is, and, and Paul talked about it a little bit, but how, how do you get people under the age of 30 to be represented in these processes? I see that they are, the, the digital surveys, the quantitative study is, has pretty balanced results, and I think that's encouraging. But when it comes to in-person involvement, you know, on weekdays and even weeknights, if they're, especially if they're a young family, and young families are the people who are moving into Royal Oak, I just, I want to, I'm going to want to hear from you how you will actively make sure that that demographic participates.
Yeah. And one, one thing that, that we have found to be more useful for that demographic is, is to sort of allow them to come in when they're able, which is, you know, it adds staffing requirements, but, you know, if we're going to be there all day anyways, it's certainly possible to do that. And we've also done that in, in the past, following up on input sessions at, at a later date in case we miss people. We're, we're trying to avoid specific, you know, we're trying to avoid spring break and the end of school and these sorts of things and not, and not hold this right when people are getting into summer break. But I think the, the other, the other piece is being more successful at reaching out to, to connectors. One is, is a school district who has been, who we have reached out to, and we need to continue to, to reach out to them to, to help push for parents and families to, to participate as well. And Paul, you may have some additional thoughts.
I think just one other strategy that we had talked about, so there's a plan for, for the, the debrief sessions or sort of the drop-in sessions about, once the content is generated and, and once we have proposals that we're seeking input on, in this case, given, given the participation we've had so far, we talked about looking to align some of those drop-in sessions with events that are already happening that, where people are already attending, which is always a, a successful way to sort of, you know, you pull someone aside for five minutes and, and we've had success with that in the past. So that, in, especially that particular phase of sort of soliciting input on, on project proposals, that's one strategy we're looking at.
Okay, yeah, good idea, good idea to reach out to the schools as well. Okay, I'm done.
All right. It's big-
One thing on, on the, on the, on the parks, on the parks there, just as a response to that, is that the, the parks plan, you know, is five years, it's a facilities plan, which is a little bit different than, than saying, looking at the physical distribution of parks. I mean, like, it's not like we can go and create a bunch of new parks anywhere particularly easily, but we can look from a physical standpoint at how parks interact with, with, with neighborhoods and corridors, the access to parks, and then also what, you know, the, the size of park and the service area that it is, it is providing to, to understand how that works in the structure of the city. So those are the sort of like master plan scale things that are different from, say, a five-year facility plan.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
All right, now Ms. Bickie.
Thanks very much. I encourage everyone to take a look at the report. I thought it was very useful and I really appreciated the content and how it was laid out. One of the main points I want to make on the areas of focus, I think this list captured extremely well, everything I heard in the discussions, I was able to go to six of the focus groups or, or listening sessions, I should call them. The one thing I don't see on this area of focus, which I might suggest, is, is again, sort of, sort of something in the nature of family-friendly or all-age-friendly. I think it's really important that we do look at our seniors and aging in place, but similarly, especially with our demographics, as you present in the report, this kind of family-friendliness and what that means and, and how it relates again to access to parks and, and those other land use issues, I think is something that might be worth having in the list of area of focus. I thought the report was really good and I think it captured at least what I was hearing in the meetings. I really appreciated that it's kind of crisp and to the point. I'd say that was one main thing I kind of caught that I thought was a challenge. And I might have other couple of comments. I really like the mapping that you're doing. I especially like the mapping with the walk shed. And the one comment I would have about that one is to talk about the dangerous intersections, maybe as an overlay at some point. But I thought for the place we're at now in this process, the listening sessions being open, even with a few glitches maybe in logistics, and I even had a little hesitation when I came in, but once I got to the groups and I was listening and I helped facilitate, just because there were so many people, which was a great turnout, I really found the looseness of the discussion to be very illuminating. And similarly, I was quite struck by the slight differences in the four quadrants that we used, but I was really kind of happy to hear that there's a lot of similarity. And as you've mentioned with the demographics, I think on some of the structural issues and housing, we don't have a huge growth in population. We have a moderate growth, but we do have kind of a youthfulness in the center, and I think that will help us guide a lot on both analyzing what we've done so far in terms of additional housing and such, but what we might need to do in the future. Anyway, so I appreciated all of that. And I might have one or two other things that might pop up, but I'll send an email because I love email.
Thanks. And, you know, the rail line is also a very important barrier, you know, not just as dangerous intersections, but, you know, also the way that the rail disrupts the city.
All right. Okay, Mr. Gantina.
Just one more quick one. Obviously, community engagement is a critical piece of this entire process. In your summary, you had mentioned a little over 3,600 engagements from the community. Can you just help characterize that for us and for the public in terms of a city of our size, roughly 60,000 residents? Can you characterize that engagement level? Is it, is it what was expected? Is it high, low, based on your experiences in other cities of this size?
as dangerous intersections, but, you know, also the way the rail disrupts the city.
All right. Okay, Mr. Cantina.
Just one more quick one. Obviously, community engagement is a critical piece of this entire process. In your summary, you had mentioned a little over 3,600 engagements from the community. Can you just help characterize that for us and for the public in terms of a city of our size, roughly 60,000 residents? Can you characterize that engagement level? Is it what was expected? Is it high, low, based on your experiences in other cities of this size? Because I think understanding how well or not well folks are engaged at this point will help inform us as we move forward and get into the Shret process, if there's work for us to do or not. So I would really like your opinion on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, so far, it's pretty high, actually. The 13, you know, 60, we're probably after today in the, like, the 1370. The survey is the most successful of all things so far, and, you know, that's where a lot of the open-ended pieces come from as well. But even the in-person attendance, when we did this in Royal Oak, the Royal Oak ones with 40, what was it, 50 people per each of those, of those meetings. In Birmingham, it was between, you know, 15 and 30. So you're definitely getting, getting more people up for those, those meetings. The institutional stakeholders was quite low, so we do, we do need to focus on that. And I think in terms of the business community, it'll be helpful to have a better connection with, with businesses specifically on Woodward versus in downtown, you know, versus on the corridors. I think the, the youth engagement is always, always, always difficult. And so, you know, we'll continue to try to push on that. But the numbers in terms of respondents on the survey and people showing up in person is, is good in my experience to date for a city of this size. And Paul, do you have any more?
No, I just, I think, I agree that 1,300 is a, it's a little, it's a significant response in a city of this population, so that's, that's good. And I think we had estimated at least 75 people at each neighborhood meeting, so, you know, compared to 15 and 30, that was also very successful. I think each, the planning staff sent postcards to every mailing address in the city, so that, that helped drive the, drive the response.
All right, another question here from Ms. Beaky.
Actually, it's a related comment, again, on the, on the public participation. I really feel like, to simplify, again, the youth input, again, working with one teacher at the high school, to have a meeting with one classroom can really give some insightful insight, as long as you have, you know, kind of a mix of how they commute and that sort of thing. Because again, for any qualitative input, that kind of mixed group would be good even to specify, to go where they are rather than trying to find them or get them to answer something online. And similarly with parents with kids, again, something adjacent to something at a school where the parents are waiting for their kids to play a sport or something like that maybe could provide some just quick intercept-type things which would balance this out. Because again, I think from my perspective, having seen the people in person, we have a good mix, but it would be very helpful to get some parents and some, you know, teenage-age people to give some comment. But again, even one good focus group, since I do that kind of research as well, would be very useful.
And Paul and I also had discussed events, community events, and the, you know, using that to also get connected with people in the community because, you know, more, more families, more, you know, a greater variety of people come out to regular events.
All right. Okay, well, this is a, this is a complicated process. It's a very important process with many facets, and clearly, one hour is not enough time for an update report, but that's what we have. I see that the mayor just came in. I just should give him a chance to ask any questions that he would be like to.
Well, I apologize. We had the Keller Elementary 4th Grade Concert rescheduled tonight, and my son had a speaking role, so I wasn't going to miss it. Without a lot of context right now, I don't have a question at this point.
Okay, just thought I'd let you have a chance if you did.
At the risk of repeating answers.
Okay, very good. All right, so anything, we do have a public comment section. We only have a couple of minutes left, but I think if somebody from the audience would like to speak, it probably only have time for two or three of you. We have a convention here of three minutes, but given the short time, maybe anybody wants to comment would like to keep it shorter than that.
Sure, I wouldn't, I don't know that our people at our next meeting would mind if we ran five or 10 minutes long to be able to hear from everyone.
All right, we'll see how many people there are.
We'll see.
And our consultants can stick around?
Yep.
Because I think, I think these comments you need, would need to hear. Okay, if that's the sense of the, of the commission, I'm perfectly happy with that. Okay. I will open the public comment. If there are people who'd like to comment on what you just heard or didn't hear, right here. Come on up, introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. Got several concerns. Primary concern is, you know, there's a perceived or implied predetermined outcome. The city hired McKenna, the same consultants, to guide the master plan rewrite process that other communities such as Holland, Michigan hired to drive the same outcome of inserting multifamily dwellings into single-family neighborhoods. The city only interviewed consultants who are experts in eliminating single-family zoning. The city's RFP was to rewrite the master plan and focus on redevelopment in Royal Oak rather than to review the existing master plan which focuses on preserving and protecting. Looking through the 50-page summary, there are things that hit me that are concerning. On page 36, there's a reference to the 15-minute neighborhood that is promoted by Klaus Schwab's World Economic Forum. This guy is a devout communist, and he's doing this throughout the world. I really object to that. The other thing is this accessory buildings. You know, there were 26 to 38% that agreed to this. This would be granny cottages and garage apartments. This would increase population density, place stress on parking in the neighborhoods. I would like to see the consultants correlate this with age group and owner versus renter. And when you present things, rather than use them, using a mono, shades of a mono color, single color, use different colors so that you can differentiate between things. It's very difficult when it's a single color. I did notice that the demographics that are 29 to 30%, 20 to 39-year are the highest, which are the young people with families and children. And I know in our neighborhood, we live on a corner, and Eaton Cross is kind of a walk-through for everybody, and we're seeing more and more carriages with one, two, and three kids, and the kids are starting to outnumber dogs. So that's, that's encouraging. There was mention on page 47, you know, about people employed in Royal Oak being able to afford housing, and it mentioned city employees. We have a city employee that lives two blocks from, from us, and up until just recently, we had a state, Michigan State policeman. So, anyway, thank you.
Please introduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Okay, Mike Thompson, 1210 Irving, Lawson Park Homeowners Association. I've got copies of a letter, six copies. Chairman Gesada, Commissioners, City Planners, Legal Staff, Consultants. It's a fine, fine report. Spring is here. The birds are chirping in the trees. The sun was out, walking the dog today. This is a pretty exciting process. I'll speed it up, working together, very professional report. This letter from our association is a combination of folks that live around Lawson Park on the South End. So just to go through it quickly, we, we don't want multifamily housing in our neighborhood, and it was pretty evident in the survey report from the consultants. And we've got some pretty, pretty evidence-based reasons for it. So we like the 2012 master plan that's on file. We'd like the same protections for single-family residents to carry on through that. The report was encouraging that the main topics that our group found that we liked in the survey in this 50-page report, page 23, "Top Three Reasons Sense of Community Affection for Respective Neighborhoods Existing character of existing neighborhoods." Page 24, "Frequent Concerns That Have Perceived Predetermined Recommendation: Multifamily Housing." That's, that's based on evidence, that's based on what's happened in the South End and putting big boxes next to bungalows. So it's not a, it's not a perceived thing. Page 35, "The Quotes Demonstrating Conflict." "We want to preserve single-family, but we love walkable, sustainable neighborhoods with affordable housing that doesn't take from the city's character. Those are not conflicting." In fact, the Delaware, which is on your agenda later today, 32 units, we're happy to see that. I'm hoping that the two are still attainable in the PUD agreement, that they're still preserved for folks that, you know, need some help. Page 47, "It's Great to See That the Existing Neighborhoods Accommodate," with, that only 22% agreed to put more housing in the neighborhoods, with 57 disagreed, 21 were neutral. So 78% did not back that. Page 48, "88% Response That People Want Single Family Homes or to Various," that they want to keep that in the, in the neighborhood. I want to introduce a neighbor, Nancy on Batavia. She's got, she wants to talk about our case study, our, our experience, what happens when you put, when you encroach or put big boxes without following the zoning ordinance guidelines. So Nancy's next, please.
Nancy Poprovsky, 1119 Batavia, thank you.
I attended a master plan roundtable. My group's main concern was neighborhoods being swallowed up by high rises and overdevelopment.
It's already happened in my neighborhood. Our group leader encouraged and praised us for our participation about keeping our neighborhoods intact. He said he understood that less is more. At the summary wrap-up, a disappointment was our group leader's Post-it note summary that was vague. He left out of misrepresented important concerns that he had just praised us on. Perhaps at the next workshop, the public can write their own brief Post-it notes, so at the summary wrap-ups, ideas or personal experiences are given to the entire audience. Not mentioned was the fact that mature trees were coming down at a rapid rate, more than 70 for one development alone in my neighborhood. The city's Arbor Day proclamation boasts planting new trees, but new trees take at least 20 years to mature. The city supports a climate action plan. Cutting down too many mature trees, waiting for new ones to grow, and overdeveloping with too much cement takes up too much green space and adds to climate and flooding issues. This all goes against climate action. The survey's online summary of the roundtables states the public has perceived predetermined recommendations for multifamily housing. That encroaches into single-family neighborhoods. It states about frequent public, public concerns about recently and anticipated development. It states misunderstanding around the master plan are clear. Please understand and listen about the impact and devastation that has happened to my unlucky neighbors with a three-story development being finalized 20 feet, 25 feet from their fence line. Here's what they thought would never happen to them. Balconies three stories high facing their backyard with multiple people and units looking down on them. Being avid gardeners and now having the sun greatly impacted by the massive three-story building. Daily loud construction distracting their work from home. This happened to me with the adjacent development for over a year from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but I will add, that is a good development. It's low. Now that this building has been going up, it's alarming to see just how close it is to our property. This is their words. This is and will immensely impact our privacy, sun, garden, and most of all, quality of life. Encroaching development has already drastically changed the character, beauty, green space, privacy, lower traffic volume of our once-single-planning residential neighborhood. Please keep the old master plan intact that keeps our great and dearly loved neighborhoods intact. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Sue Gilbert, 1219 Irving, Lawson Homeowners Association. I want to compliment Commissioner Douglas for your points that you brought to the survey company. All well-taken and very candid. Appreciate everything the commission's doing. And just to balance on what my neighbors have said, it's difficult. The challenges when planning this type of thing is difficult. And I look at the South End neighborhood, and one thing we know about urban development when there are highways bordering neighborhoods, that those fringes of the neighborhoods begin to decay with the highways. So I envision more multifamily homes taking over, the houses that are falling into decay because they are so close to the highway. Commissioner Douglas mentioned corporate landlords purchasing homes, homes that are now undesirable because they're too close to large developments, because they've lost solar access, they have lost privacy access, and now this begins to encroach further into a neighborhood. We want to avoid that. We want everybody to be very careful when they think about large multifamily development and the different things that it can bring to the neighborhood. Certainly, the neighborhoods are the source of income for the multi-use shopping areas, and we want to make sure that we have a balance that keeps everyone happy, keeps the businesses in business, keeps the residents coming to the neighborhoods and wanting to live in the neighborhoods. There are some pricing issues. My husband and I have looked at several homes in Royal Oak over the last two years. We can't afford to move back in if we sell our house. It's difficult for us because we love our neighborhood. We love our city. We want to stay here, but it's become untenable. Staying where we are is great, but it's complicated to age in place in a 100-year-old home. Thank you.
Please introduce yourself, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Carl Brown. I live in the Woodward Side neighborhood, just southeast of Woodward and 13 Mile. We've been in there since 2009 and before that, just north of there, since 1997. I've just been taking a look at things going on with the survey, and one of the things I wanted to point out is if we do follow-up surveys, I like to see if the survey can be authenticated. Right now, I've noticed that with private relay and private browsing, people can take the survey over and over again. And it would be nice to avoid the potential of stacking the survey with various parties. I might decide to do that. So please look into authentication for subsequent surveys. Also, I think it's important also to look at housing cost versus housing value. Right when we want to buy a house, we always hope the cost or the price will be low. But once we own it, we want to build value so that someday when we retire, we can sell it and hopefully have some equity in that house. So it's an investment, and we pick Royal Oak because it's a good investment for wealth building for our own retirement. And I think we're in a housing bubble right now. House prices have more than doubled in the last several years, and it may go down by itself to make houses more attainable, but on the other hand, less desirable for those of us that want to use it for retirement someday. So please study the difference between homeowners and what their targets are, and people that want to enter the Royal Oak and what their targets are, because they're probably potentially the opposite. Thank you.
Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Janice Wagman. First of all, I want to say that I think they did a great job on the community engagements. We, there was a great turnout. I thought it was very organized, but I was in the fourth group, and like Ms. Beaky said, I thought it was, it was done very well. For recommendations, next time, I would like to see for the Shretts in Birmingham, they put signs around the community advertising that there was they put signs around the community, advertising that there was a master planning process going on and that, and I think that's very eye-catching. A lot of times when people get postcards, they just toss them, and they don't really pay much attention. So I think that would be a good way to advertise it and maybe get some of the younger people involved. I'd also like to see, I see you've got some Land Use USA analysis going on, but I do not see an inventory of what the current vacancy rate is and what the rental rates are for what we have now. Are we at limit? Do we need more, et cetera? And I'd like to see defining what is considered affordable. From what I saw at the Harrison approval, a single individual earning up to $24 an hour would pay a little over $1,300, and that's considered affordable. That's a lot of money to me. Regarding the community engagements, where residents and property owners were invited to, quote, "participate in discussions about strategic issues to provide early guidance for the preparation of a new master plan," I thought, like I said, I thought they did really good, and I enjoyed doing it and sharing my opinions and hearing that of other people. But I was shocked at what I heard afterwards, and not by online social media trolls, but by commissioners, the chair of the Democratic Party. They implied that the meetings were stacked. Quote, "I was dismayed to see local right-wing activists attempt to hijack the meeting. I attended, this was full QAnon-type nonsense, baseless conspiracies, fear-mongering, filibustering with endless complaints. There is no reason why we should let them win in the master plan process. Meetings were lopsided, horrible." They were saying people, that Royal Oak is horrible, and that it was a political ploy, et cetera. I don't think that was the case. And what I'm encouraging you, I don't think you are trying to do that, but what I'm encouraging you to do is to make it clear to people that you want their participation. It's not a political move, and that you're going to entertain all of their views, not just try and make it your views. So, thank you.
Please introduce yourself, three minutes. Hello, my name's Tom Halleck, 210 North Center. I was former city commissioner. I spent 13 years on the planning commission, chaired it for nine years, and I was very active during the last master plan process, so I have a lot of experience with this. Everybody in Royal Oak needs to study what new urbanism means. It is a movement nationwide, and it's being attempted to push into here. New urbanism's primary tenet is that single-family is bad, and that it needs to be eliminated, and we need density, density, density. And again, this is what is being pushed here. In order to put duplex, triplex, and apartment buildings on every corner, as one city commissioner suggested, you need to eliminate single-family zoning under Michigan law. You can't do that in a single-family, it's called spot zoning. So in order to do what is being attempted to do, single-family zoning will have to disappear in wherever they intend to do this. Understand that what they're talking about is putting duplexes and triplexes all the way through your neighborhood, putting apartment buildings on the corners. They've already tried to put five stories on Woodward from one end with possible bonus floors. All of this entails less setbacks, less green space, more impact on your sewers, say goodbye to the sun, and you get to live in a fishbowl because your neighbors are, like my neighbors on Billings Place behind me, which was zoned for three stories, and they gave them five stories and didn't even ask or blink out the extra two stories, not even a discussion, not one word. You can count on getting five to seven stories on Woodward. When the question came up regarding what is character of a single-family neighborhood, that's a very easy question. The characteristic is "single family," not multi, not duplex, not triplex, not things on every corner, and understand that all the parking requirements are going to be heavily reduced. So up on, say, Woodward Avenue by Vincetta, they buy a couple blocks up there, and they put up a couple of five-to-seven-story buildings up there. You're looking at 160 to 200-plus units, and there's not going to be one single parking space for company. You get five, 10 people have a party. Now you've got 100 cars looking for someplace to go. There goes your neighborhood, because there won't be any place for them to park on those developments. So it is very essential that, since the single-family preservation was absolutely the main tenet in every discussion, and in my group, it was 16 to 1 opposed to it, you need to respect the wishes of the community. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Dora Beltracitis. I'm at 320 South Pleasant. Wasn't planning on speaking, but I just want to reiterate or ask that the commission look at all the existing multifamily duplexes and rentals that we have available that aren't being used. I'm in a neighborhood where I'm surrounded by duplexes and apartment buildings, but they've been there for a long time in the neighborhood. They're part of the character of the neighborhood. I'm fine with those. But I also walk my neighborhood regularly, so I also know that there's a lot of vacancies. And so sometimes, I don't know, I guess I don't always see the need for these high-density complexes that keep being proposed or, you know, seem to be proposed, and one in my particular neighborhood as well, when there's a lot of existing housing that I think is just being underutilized. So before we keep building up, you know, make sure that what we have is already being used. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here. Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Rick Karlowski, 419 Virginia. Yes, I also attended the workshops, and just reiterating what they said, most people were very happy with the way Royal Oak is right now. Why there seems to be a need to want to actually transform it to something, I don't know. Equally along the lines of where do we want to go, there seems to be a dichotomy here of, well, we've got to have affordable housing in duplexes and triplexes, but we want more new families. Well, those, to me, are 180 degrees on a phase. One is going to want a single-family housing with certain characteristics, and another is more of a rental transitional building. No one's planning on raising families, to my knowledge, in duplexes, and in fact, suburbs started out because people didn't want to live in that, in the inner-city or the current, the old cities, they wanted more space and single-family houses. So why don't we have a survey to find out what new, did I say something wrong there, Mr. Fornier? Did I say something that was out of context?
We have to address the entire board.
Okay. Anyway, if you're, I know you guys all think you have all the answers here, but why don't you ask what the actual young families want? Have a survey for that, and then we can find out what you need after whites. And if you're not going to pay attention to what the public comments are, then don't have public comment. Also, since I was right next to a Airbnb that had a incident where a party, a bunch of partygoers decided to pull out a 9-millimeter and start popping it in the air, fun 20 minutes, I can assure you. If we're going to have all of these eccentric buildings, why don't we find out, you know, how are we going to regulate them? We're just going to have a whole bunch of RBNBs and absentee landlords where things can get out of hand? So if we're going to start having this stuff going in the neighborhoods, you're going to have to figure out how you're going to actually regulate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Phyllis Seltzer, North Lafayette. What I tell you is that there are things that I've heard or seen, some from some of your groups and some not, so don't get angry if I talk to you. So what is your plan? How have we shown respect for our residents? Recently, we heard about issues affecting our properties. Arden Place and Webster both have situations that affect their largest investments. Arden can be cured, paid for by those who are responsible, and Webster will forever have that monstrosity next to it, like many other homes in the city. And now we have Fourth Street, South Troy, and likely others. For your information, we will be needing cars far into the near future, and hopefully we'll be able to enjoy our backyards. What was the trade-off for South Troy? That's a great example of a PUD. So as far as going green, I don't know if that's going to help, and especially, it would be difficult to get up on the roof to get some green. We also have some downtown condos where values will decrease due to the loss of their valuable prime views once our newest sun-blocking building is completed. We have homes backing to large walls or high buildings. This is due to the obsession for density. Let us not forget affordable homes on Webster and others that are now squeezed between large, extremely high, semi-cloned Bigfoots. It appears at the residence at the roundtable meeting with McKenna and staff was pretty evident what the people wanted. Do you care? If not serious enough, it would be laughable to think that your plans will not affect values. It is offensive that you are using older multifamily units along through streets or feeder streets for comparison of the plans you have for us. What we don't hear from you is that buyers who purchased in areas with multifamily commercial, like she said, offices, et cetera, know what they had. We didn't buy our single-family homes to have a second building next door, less sun, or once a quiet street so packed with cars and trucks that exiting one's driveway is going to be almost impossible, and passing a car on that street is also going to be possible. So I'm curious, has any of you have truthfully advised any of your neighbors about this and what they have said? How much would an investor spend for a home on your block? I will never understand why our powers that be would take a move like this. Oh, that was close.
All right, anybody else like to make a comment? Right here.
Hi, sorry, I just came in a little bit late, so I missed if I need to say my name. I'm Zane DeForre, I live on 415 Oak Run Court in Bron, right off of Rochester Road. I am here both to speak in support of the zoning changes that are being considered today for the, like, new housing developments, and also to recommend a policy be added to the upcoming master plan changes. The specific policy that I would like to be included in the master plan going forward would be a recommendation to the city commission to consider what is called a split-rate tax or a land-value tax. This is a policy that's being considered in the city of Detroit. They've paid for a study by the Lincoln Institute of Land Use, and the study found that, at least in the city of Detroit where the study was being conducted, or where the models were being done, the property, the imposition or the change from property tax system to a split-rate tax system would lead to a decrease in tax burdens for something like 80% of homeowners. I don't remember the exact number, but it was pretty close to that. To give like a little bit of an overview of what a split-rate tax is, it's like a property tax, but instead of just assessing taxes based on the combined value of the land and improvements that are built upon that land, you separately account for the value of the land and the property that's built on top of it, so that you can weight the tax burdens away from homeowners and from renters and towards businesses and speculators that don't, that under-invest in their properties and in their communities, and that hold vacant lots for many years without improving on them and thereby improving the neighborhood. So this would require a change in state law. It's not something that could currently be implemented by the city, but if it's possible to include in the master plan, I would like to see that, an inclusion of, I guess, that the city should, if a change to state law is ever made to allow for a split-rate tax system, that the city should consider it and should investigate what its impact would be on the residents of Royal Oak presently and into the future. So that's my little spiel about the split-rate tax system. When it comes to the zoning changes for the new housing developments, I'll just say that there's a lot of network benefits that come from dense developments. I do have some feelings for the people who are worried their backyard, people who have seen to their backyards, but we live in a society, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments on the master plan thus far? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. We went a little bit over, but I think that was worth it. Any other comments from the commissioners speaking?
I was just wondering, maybe before we completely end, maybe with none of the mayor's back, we can maybe pick, see if we want to go with the week that they had recommended in May, or if we want to pick a different week so that while the public is here, we can maybe at least finalize that.
All right, you missed this part, I think. The consultant suggested the week of May 15th would be the charrette-intensive week. I personally don't have a problem with that week, but good.
Yeah, I mean, it looks, yeah, so the 15th is offset from the commission meeting schedule, right? So we don't have any conflicts. We have one on the 8th. Yeah, so the 15th is open Monday.
Right, that'd be the whole week, though.
Yeah, okay. That's what I mean, if there was like the week before or the week after, we have commission meetings.
Mr. Gantina, any comment about the week of May 15th?
That works for me.
Any comment from the department?
No, as long as the consultant's got the answers they were looking for this evening and the direction, we're satisfied, so I'll punt that back to Matt and Paul and see if you need any more clarification or direction.
I was going to, of course, definitely have some good feedback on, this is what we asked. Just one other thing, which, because of your thoughts, you have progress information and things like this, we share.
And we can post this document to the website, or sort of, you know, want to know your thoughts on, for in-progress information, like I said, the survey's still open. We were intending to, as soon as it's closed, do the analysis and put that on the website. We have public comment that we're collecting, so essentially, the question here is if you think that it makes sense in the order that we're sort of approaching it right now, where we're wrapping up a collection of analyses, like the demographics, putting that online, we'll wrap up the mapping, put that online, we'll wrap up the studies from Land Use USA and planning, and put that online. You know, are there any concerns with that order? Would you like, should that go through your review and then onto the website? Should there be some other process?
That's a question for us. I think that I'd like to hear what the commissioners have to say. I'm thinking that May 15th is just about two months away. We have another planning commission meeting next month. You're in touch with the department, of course, on a regular basis, but perhaps we want, we would want you to come back in a month and continue this conversation.
Yeah, perfect, and I think we need that for the short planning anyhow.
Yeah, okay, let's plan on doing that. All right. Ms. Beeky.
In my opinion, the question about the materials of being posted on the website, I think if some of the materials are such that the survey, for example, is going to be open a while longer, I personally think it's good to post. a lot longer, I personally think it's good to post what you have and say it's a preliminary. Mark it a preliminary, mark the date, you did the assessment, but have it on the website so if people are interested, they can see it. Personally, I don't think it needs to be run through us, but I wouldn't mind if you want to do an email round. And then when you update it, just update that this is the second version and date it so that people can see that there's a progression. I think that's the most important part, but I think having it sooner rather than later is good so people have a chance to absorb the information.
And one quick comment, I take to heart something that one of the commentators said. Some of your maps, you use, I mean, for example, the same shade of orange in different intensities to show different qualities on a map, and it was, it is hard to read. If you have an ability to change that with a click of a mouse, I would recommend it.
All right. Any other comments, questions from any of the commissioners or from the consultants? All right, well, we're going to see you back here in a month, and in between that time, we'll look at the website. You'll post the report and everything else, right? Not sure I followed everything that you were going to post, but we will monitor it. All right, anything else? If not, the next order of business would be to adjourn this work session. We need a motion for that, it's a work session, okay? I will adjourn the work session. Thank you very much. Matt, Paul? Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for calling.
We're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we're going to reconvene for the 7 o'clock planning commission meeting.